Thank you.
I love the I think it's been working with Hello. Let me work your personal thank you.
I would say you started off in that here. Yeah. So I never shared it. Um, but I just would say we're pretty people in my questions and they I don't know. Thank you.
So let's take a job. I'm like he's. Okay. I'll respond to you. You know. He finds the like he's. I don't wish. No, I'll respond to you. You know. You may. Yeah. It's not bad.
Well, we go. So like.
Sure. It's just. All right. Seven. Try.
My. Where can I? I think. I think. I think. Yeah.
I got. Two in your. I have two years. Need.
I. Yeah.
You. Yeah.
Can you try?
I have. You.
Okay.
I'll call you. I'm. Yeah. But I.
You.
Even that. You. You.
You. Okay.
Yeah. You. Oh. Yeah. That. Yeah. You. You.
Okay. Yeah.
My back. You.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah. 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 It's. Um. My. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah.
I thought. You.
Yeah. I. Great. Right. Yeah. Yeah.
No. That's. So with.
I think we are. We're. And I. I'd like to request that we 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 I intend to be the. Local. Um. First, we'd love to have this. Who does. Okay. Any other things to the agenda? Um, would I I would I'm motion to accept the consent to agenda with the uh to the. Next. I. And any other questions? Here in three days. Five. I think so. Right, maybe. Miss my.
Um, last few years, I'm trying to. For one, but I had to talk to you about a few things. We had. This. At the pleasure of spending uh days with many of our teachers and all of our. Greater we had a five and two and three. Thanks for having me. Right. Um. It was a really neat opportunity to start to monitor and copy things together about somewhat. For virtual. Examine. Two of them. And uh you know, it was a really good. Both of them have. For you to have a copy of the thing more to. Um. They. What do you like? That. So here, teachers. This is a. Uh, attention to being in her is the respect. It's. A type of practice should be bringing. And so look at the statements there, they have both their side of the practices and research. Around, but the best teachers are on. Treat. Um, world. And then I think questions on our right side. Is that we ask each other's questions about their teaching, about the way teachers can. Down their own. And the part of this is really helping what teachers do and helping them have a very good tool to. Down. Um, so I wanted to have that because what I have to do is help highlight what schools' roles look. And so we could be working with teachers. Um, almost as a coach, how I help uh teacher get better with data and how I the principal learn. About what I do by learning from teachers as well. Which bring the stack up. Um. I think what you're there to see is that we're trying to do a lot of things. Uh, the document right here is called the measure of destruction leadership. This would be building it so for the principal system will through what the main area is that impacted. Job, you see more fact, you still see similar form that they have this um clear. Um, so part of the school's role to develop the vision and culture, learn culture. But on the back, it's improving infrastructure practice. How it is there's a level, how to create resources and how they manage the process and the building. So this serves as a campaign in that to define is the beginning of learning about practices. Terms, the best practice for schools. And so um. The. They were operating in um an environment where we all are committed to length. And the school and the teacher working out in that. So we spent three days on six on the train we had in June. We will continue uh taking for the final three days in August. So um as I said, that one before, I'm very honored and proud to have. Sure. Care. Um, I don't know any others that have four plus teacher. And it's something that teachers are thinking time of summer to do this, but it's also uh just trying to think it'll be tremendous. Or when we hold it out. Know there are many minded workers together and we have a lot of talented people. Uh. So I thought about some of those humans that kind of a little bit of work. That's. Not to. Process. Uh, we've done a lot of right now uh doing sort of plans. Uh, something about S T R for the R for this is a time of year where we're having a lot of reversion. This. Better. And so been putting those pieces together and getting that uh in place. I want to assure you that um I think book is and and book is called being. And this is mainly most of the time. J K. Really got. Okay, we recommend the team I have um in school a lot to meet and sometimes it means they're never talking. Um, in fact, times meet to meet. And unfortunately, they um it's on our time. So what this is all about is how to make most out of meetings and chat when you want to read this time. And uh something about that, so I'll get your report once I read it if any of you are interested in checking this out. Table. Um. The other thing I super. Uh, just a little bit of traction we want. Um, we have a uh selection in our service. I believe we had a Jennifer was in a chair kind of practice to. But which. Stress. Um, that that great is exciting and and uh we're not going to. You and so um Jennifer uh just called you to have uh some space between three and seven. So. Uh, a little bit of meaning um with the food and my recommendation to be pursue to an RFP. Uh, for who's for this and I want to be very clear about that means um in our table. If that so, um, there are there are three contractors that come in very specific. One of the ones is our. So there's. These funny what because especially in how many are many is uh more to. To see how we name healthier, how do we have options and choices? And uh they will help to grade and run for uh your food services. There's a. Um, what you're not interested in doing and this is not in any way affirmative. It is an RFP for our own people. We maintain our belief, we will continue to employ our posts and our heads of small food service personnel. Now, there are people who believe that they are a strong leader or position. So we have intention of uh that. So it's certainly for working, saving, ordering our foods and how can provide our product for kids uh during school. So um clearly, which I need to. Actions that have to be the action that I think to have your blessing. I can't want to have this decision at all. Uh, my suggestion, recommendation was to do an RFP for that. We don't have to choose to avoid the drives. We can still that on the side, we rather look at. Inflating position or to both for uh for ourselves or our schedule. Is for that, I think we probably have that, but we have to wait for me to. Elated to. These. So I don't know if you have. Or that before we go to the states.
I saw. One. So. We've been out. About. So do they don't. That will. Look for. So. When I back. Other. Reasons. I would.
Exactly, we would put in the bigger. Of course, we're not looking at any of our own employees, their own. Yeah, of course, nation ordering um in the instance, believe management of the needs throughout this. So um they will know that when and have exactly. Some of anybody who. Would ask. You all will be able to have information. Sit on the top.
Can you. They can use. A qualification for that.
Yes. There are the uh department that calls actually that governing body that oversees these qualifications. Position. And it's based on full size, so it's a full desire size, going to hire somebody as a. Degree. Um, and also some experience out there is there are three exceptions that there's certification. And if the person holds a well-qualified certification, who serves and they also have two things of two. They have these two years experience, they could. To discern size when they had a. History. Um, but those are the situations that by government that we have to. Five and so. Any of the contractors that you're looking at on RFP which will filter required with. Their peoples are recording. That. I think. Three. Patient. It will. And. So giving. Should. Say.
Yeah.
Really.
So in that. I agree nicely.
Thank you. Alright, so we have words. And anything you want to. Are the sole. Your.
Okay. Uh, the. A lot of money. Uh, yeah. I'm. Off. This. Their. First. Okay. And repeat order. Or any. Uh, we check we're viewing the check. For the. Thirteen. Paper. To do. That include. Four. Check. Of. For twenty sixteen, twenty six, twenty six. So. Free. They're looking for the checks. All of that documentation requested was ordered and and just. Just. So. Spencer. We received. Reusing the general expense account is of thirty six. As much. And say forty one page. Each. In all two thousand one hundred thirty seven. Day. We use. To the day we use nine one fifty. Six percent of thirty seven million dollar. It was just. Were received. This now. Uh, for review at least quarterly for the year. And you. And quite. Copy. Like. Uh, how do you have? If you look at last page, the. Don't lose. To say. Ninety. One point five six. As of as of today. It's. And ninety four fourteen. And not yet final, that will be final. Uh, until everything is in for this week. We're. Is. A. Uh, there are. But there's. There's. This time. Our next year will be. Now. There's some first with retirement or capital angle. And there is no. July. During. Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. To me. Um, if. You know. So now. Name or. What. Had. The question. Is. Question was. That our. Need. Be done. So. Um. Decision. To. On. And very. Page. Back. And. I'm. Not. Like. And then. I think. As well. That we. Remember that. At last. Evening. So. Comment. Hi. It's like. The. Did. I want to answer my question. That the. I. I. With this.
She did a great job. For. This.
Good. Hey. This. There you go. Turned. Patients.
It's a little bit about the teacher. The. Holy. Ministry. What I talk a little bit about is my. For. I. So um this is. Something. I. Should. And this is uh forth I. Uh, I'm blocked. There's. These. Home. And uh this is a. Super. As I. Form. Obviously, I don't have it. Free. Type. But I want to give you a little bit of background on this. Um, I'm also going to be passing out this document for the posting and assurances. So essentially. And in the. Chicken. We have approvals that need to research farms. And what you know is that um the type of migration is on the the. Some. That. These opposed to postings that are considered the research phase that's come from. So this is required. That. States. It's. A little. If you get into this a little bit, you'll see. Is that there are different areas of which. You know. I evaluate that will be a. Just. This. Um. Moving forward, this will see that the rating mirror will do for nature and just grant. Printable. Um, the. Effective. Back. And how. To. For. There. Is there. And you'll see the. The. First. Generation. Shift. By how. Being. And structural leadership. Or position management. Communication. Union relations. Uh, uh, from. Own a six. Is. Professionals. And ethics. That's. Factors. Factors which deal with um. The. Things like that. So. And I would like to do uh in the. I um have a close. Come. Of our. Boarding to talk through some of that stuff. Um, I'd like to add a little bit of. Help with that. Uh, and where I've been like six months and how I'm reporting in all the areas I need to improve on. And so um. This evaluation. Which would be. Then. Number. I also want to let you know that. In um I guess there's a number there is required to. Our. Name. Uh, for. Remover. Would be something that I would tend to. With you. Um, and we get trained by them. Process. Um, we are. This is. If it. On. With some of my. Where it's. Case. So this is pretty uh nice. That's. Uh. And. Owens. Will. And I've already had conversations with them. School and I currently. And I would like all the. Boards. Kind of. So might have. Need. Maybe. Great with them. And so add I would be there. Of you and defend members. And then and um whether it was here or it was there, we we did tend to. Working. So um probably at some. July. Well, at dates to determine. But we did uh hope that. Training. We could. That. So. And question. I. Wish.
Um. How. Like. This. Uh. Like. Have. Or. Do. Doesn't. Does. Or train. Was. Fill up. Because. Around. First. Never. Second. And. A lot. Before. The first one. And we. All created. That we. Peace. And that one. But. There were. Great. There's. That. Was. To do. People. Like. On. The tape. The. So. I. Said. The. You don't. So.
Okay.
Well. Because I don't. Thank you.
Yeah. It is. True. I had. So. We'll add make sure and if. For. Some. You can. We would. Share you. Follow.
So then we have our. Close. To. The. Set. Would you. Take on. Any. Cost. That's the. Six. Twenty. And. So.
Yeah. I would have to. Especially. That. To this. Once. Talk about. Things. Thank you for working. For. Since I think we start to accomplish. Should both. And then um also just. We give. Your.
We. Cause we. Do not. Think. For. This. Is.
Yeah. Totally. Yeah. I think. That. Is. Our. actions. Previously. You. Could those explain us. Hey, here's what I know. Because. This. Not see. You. And. And I. I guess. Thank you. Good. Also. So. Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's to me. Point out.
Sure.
We're looking, you know, between how. You must say. One thing that we did. All. You know. That's just. Anyway. That's. Everything. Will make. You. Tell.
Sitting. This. Is on. Right. So. The more. She. Guys. There. I start.
Yeah. That's a good.
I know you. Tell. You. Change.
Yeah.
Yeah. Every. Hands.
Sure.
Lot. Look.
Yeah. I have uh also um for those of you that are able to. The uh. Somebody. And some. You. Get.
Yeah.
Uh. So. The. We. Were a little. Today. Um, so this is a policy. I think some. Prove. That. For. Um, pass over the last three to four months. And so. Kind of. Possible. Um, we don't need to. Act on this right now. But we. Believe we start doing. Them. Uh, girls. Lie. And I would think that something might be helpful as we're talking about. Uh, we're talking about. With. How would be helpful. That. Special. Uh, such. Meaning. To deal with some of policies that. There's. A lot. Here. And some time we don't have time. And really. Please. For me. To. To. Let me. Use. My. Should. That's um what you know. Enjoy. Our. Then. Go through. At a. Over. We may set that uh see if we can schedule a broad update in in early August to have. This. Material. Pulse on this topic as you're going to discuss. These. Um, everything here to do with including. Strength. Short. Systems. Or policies. Things that has the word. Set. Which. These. You're going to. All. Opportunity. That. Um, I just wanted to have. So this is the. Next. Days. That we. I. So. We've. From it.
I want. To. See. It. To. You. Yes. I'll. See. It. Left. If. Just. Actually. Actually.
Correct.
Have. So. Do.
Correct. So we. Here. No. Uh, term to have. No. Um, but if. A. That's too. Not this policy. Or. Terms. That we have. I. Restrict. And. How. Drucker. Um, one of the things that uh we have a little section about today that I'm sure will continue. We. This. And some. Tricks. And they are. We're in a. Set. Where they don't have access to. Or. To. Do. Those. Type of. Uh. Um, and and so if we find that we're in. Service. It's. Nothing. You. You have to. Clearly. Have. Other. Except. But. Um, it's something. Concern. I think that's one of the. I. You'll. Through.
So. So. Point. The. Last. That could be. All. I don't. Read. Always.
Uh, it's it's not. The law. But.
It's. Right. I know. All the. Time.
Yes. Well. I think. And the. What we. Of us. Times. And this. We're starting to. That way. We're not. That way. Is. If. We. Say. We would prefer to train. Uh. Some. Have. So. For. Having. Anyone. Has. To. Say. Anyone. That. See. To have. And. Steve.
But. Yeah. That.
Correct.
Actual.
Yeah. But you'd be. The. Officers. Are. To.
I think. Maybe. Go to. Is. Is. I don't know. Who. Times. Training. Us. Cause. And. 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 For. Really. Um. That. All. He. Can. So. What. Had. And. Few. So. That's. And they have enough. Roads. Have. So. I mean. That's. When. All. The. Paramedic. You should. Two. There's. Sort. With that.
Okay. I. Arm. Yeah. The tenant. herself. Your. Pain. Why. So. Pain. I guess. Talk. Here. There. there's some what in and so 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 fine. But we saw here this is to all chapter. I don't hostage testing to get a break. And these not about dodgy. So that's that's usually yes.
Sure.
And then I want to point didn't come to the law.
And it's Yeah, I think that there are many training above yet the statute. Because when you always there I don't feel the the protect that that right. Yeah.
That's strong.
I don't know.
Okay. Now we as we're just
So um, if you have opportunity to see the act or any certain questions, um, just pray and ask for me that has uh, very due notice on on there are often for the patient, they're talking about uh, parts of our at time that we ran in the yard that were exposed to this risk. And this, this is something that in terms, I mean, anyone would be looking at it and say, well, I have my own accounts that are still so it was highly likely that the author here in their meeting. So I had the opportunity to sit down with you on it firm. And and you'll see that there at the end is the credit to report accounting to stream account sees all throughout the obvious to the that influence as in to flows this they practically to ensure. So the the practical entertain what that is saying is that ending the issue or insurance two hundred fifty thousand dollars to cover our accounts due to being friends and transfers and transfers out or to ensure you know, of the six million dollars profit would have been counted at mind, we would have to have many accounts we come with. The you know, if you say two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand, okay. All right. Also, he and so um, I think the author said that's acceptable level um, and that they're aware of each that have you have bank to to those and he said the only time would become issue would be in the event that you were really aware and you did have maybe you had a little bank and that was the only thing to say to you. There's high risk is the fact that that probably has higher so careful party she said, which she's been on the cycle. I'm sure that will those other concerned were. So you can feel pretty comfortable. I think the question was the question. And I I learned something through that as well. So um, I'm and I would say here we have the uh, the property actual runs for from last to that. But we want some so that that is uh, for um, your and I and very yeah.
Good question. Right, bring on and bring I think we have a patient hiring for support.
Hi, we're gonna skip we and I'd like to do some uh, and I went through a bigger process. We had nine members would be there and years and years and staff. And we just for this cycle we canceled interview ten or how fight exceptional. Uh, but Mrs. Man really uh, grew up the ninth. She won both and then first voted to look. We had first one can't forget that was to um, represent the higher we are to relationships. She has her set difficult. Uh, she's an intervention before. And we like to um, relationship with students. Yeah, also here today we have your support apparently job like that.
First of all, I'm very humbled to be so be honest. Just that all this district handle along the really me. I was supposed to know that well, man, I schools talking about older some in the years. They've had a a find that the certain nerves. Her parents mass local back that she's and two day into I mean, these are the all the member me. So very happy I'm excited to learn this. So
Thank you.
Yeah, look here. Well, hard.
I do. Um, I like her. You know, questionable. They've all made that was in um, well, they like which has help and our third like building but nearly the city. And we can take um, you know, I don't like it. If you you have say if you're yeah. It's Thanks.
Yeah. So F and you see.
Uh, I was very excited. She said, um, um, and said all first one, she do I never yelled enough for one and her she was supposed to up. And first just for trying my thing to position.
Thanks.
Well, request for some our
So question. I thought they do kind of I'm for uh, my is that is the most but it's so be this means for sharing and the higher shots from any student to school of two thousand and they if those don't keep welcome.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just just to get that and I was again, I think we should start having very much the work that you think for giving us our um, I'm excited be here with that you guys great here and just guys continue with bringing this is doing. And I do community to give very I have questions. Never what is it would the male towards is not billiard. Um, I told him team have different selling like I thought I do best working with students we got to the building so I'm with the we on the make and say word for being here. So here I want to be great and I want to as you dishes here and just flow have so that we're probably I hear my and that connection as the children here and we're happy to much. Okay. Hang on. I see him
Yeah.
It's I didn't bring me I do see her um, um, or Marshall because we also went instead of stuff. He had the that is didn't draw um, the interviews. We have um, other John um, T and help here from um, parents were getting for the year as six later a week under restaurant. She had a passion she does and hold keys integrity. She through some actions all she um, be old standing here and for um, she pursuing doctor and pollution. Um, she's doing kinds church thing and they and and has a from specific city. She went between her class from Mars and fish. Um, her husband you have their baby in the church and she's and speaking back wasn't inside water. But I told you for that and she did our district kids. Go if this is here. I had my um, bachelor level I don't you don't see that ever. I just um, have been probably all the time. I'm being able to work with team and back and it's definitely like I just incredible opportunity times. And for two um, first of all, I'm doing a goal and as I just[1202.42] it's one of the things they put when you're do and please and that to you in that and I think into team I'm there I think here to have because team I had just from those should but this is do my if that old the question I know here so but in those 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 concerning his job and um or talking about cultural tips and friends to so they just have a um come back and this shoulders it's really right and wait eight two all we there except it's and there so that I know
so
right I can comment there you are there's also this ready for higher abroad as the except the that for two thousand seventeen two years they I he let me try to
welcome
my she thank you thank you shit would you leave it's okay you leave if we we would would see point we need
all right day time wait there fire yeah
okay all right and
maybe must what you okay okay
you do downward okay
thank you
all right um we we had as a there's a lot of love I they 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 have and bringing the I
I
propose how eight I should and next
um Mr. F you want to just don't it is this that you have seen our meeting for uh and she's
no it's not so it's for fun if sure sure that for that I um if we I see we except the minute that he's ever and it is
see
go for
okay hey kind of questions here's office committee board in two thousand sixteen sixteen in nineteen and it is I